That was two seconds.
I just want to make sure I did this.
All right.
Good evening, and good evening residents of Litchfield. Welcome to the August 17th School Board Meeting. I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My computer's going to restart. All right. Again, welcome everyone. Derek Barker will be joining us probably within the hour. It's running a little late. And I'd like to introduce and welcome our new member on the school board, Paula Esbicki. Paula was selected last evening at a meeting and is taking over for the remainder of this term year. So again, welcome Paula. Any revisions to the agenda?
No, Mr. Chair.
Summary of non-public actions from July 13th. Mr. Barker made a motion to approve non-public minutes from June 22nd, 2016, as written. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried three zero zero. Ms. Burke made a motion to accept the resignation of Karen Martin, LMS Technology Education Teacher, contingent upon finding adequate replacement. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried three zero zero. Presentation and recognitions. Supposed to go into the BA report. Unfortunately, there was an incident, so Frank had to step out, so if we can just put that off until he comes back. And we've also lost Mr. Perez, so...
We could go right directly to the evaluation. Either the IT, new IT policy with Jason, and then maybe Mr. Perez will be back to do the one-on-one computers, and we'll go along that way, or...
That sounds good.
That's what we have to do, we can go through the rest of those things. I'll just kind of talk a little bit about where we are with communication, utilizing IT for communication, and I'm going to turn it over to Jason to kind of talk a little bit about a new policy that we're going to be giving to the board this evening, and which I would ask for the board to review. We've shared with the board over the last several months the fact that we're going to be trying to do a better job of communicating with the town, and reviewing different ways to communicate with the town. One of the areas that was very interesting to us was the whole idea of using Twitter as a vehicle for the public schools to communicate with citizens in town. So we contacted London Dairy, that's been doing this for the last two years, and we also talked to, I always get Wyndham and Pelham mixed up, Pelham, and they started last year. And we talked to Scott Spradling, who some of you know as Channel Eye, an anchor for a number of years, who now has his own consulting firm, and does a lot of work with communications in different ways, but he's been working with London Dairy and Pelham for the last, London Dairy for the last two years, he actually was integral to actually getting the program going. We had Scott come in, we talked to Scott, we were very pleased with what we heard, we had Scott come in and meet with the administrative team before the end of the school, and again, we were all very excited about it, so he came back in about two weeks ago, met with the administrative team, and reviewed everything, and actually it was kind of fun. He was meeting with the administrative team, and he said, "Okay, let's everybody open up a Twitter account." And so I was amazed that a couple of my more senior administrators had Twitter accounts, and it was kind of neat, so all the administrators got on Twitter, and Jason and his team were there, and we had a little fun tweeting back and forth, and so it was kind of cool. So, on our opening day, next Tuesday, Scott's going to come in and talk to the entire professional staff, all the teaching staff, about using Twitter, and it's kind of an upgrade in terms of communicating and how we use technology to communicate. So it's going to require that we revisit our acceptable use policy. We believe that our current acceptable use policy is okay, but what we would like to do is to upgrade the acceptable use policy and make it more broad in its context and more broad in its focus, so that it will include not only Twitter as a communications vehicle, but other potential ideas we might be doing down the road. So we got some policy together, and we, quite honestly, we've used policy that other districts had that had already been vetted, and we took policy from several districts and put them together, and Jason had a chance to review it, and I'd like maybe Jason to talk a little bit to that right now, and then what we're really going to ask the board to do, because it is a significant change from our current policy, is to take a look at that policy and then come back to us with any thoughts they might have before we go through any final vetting, but we would like to get this done prior to around the first of October or so.
So is there a hard copy of that over there?
Yes.
There is. Do you need to run through that?
Yeah, well, I think you just stole my internet connection, because I can't get on now, and it just sort of popped up on the firewall.
Did you just do that, Jason? So I just asked Jason if he'd talk to the policy and talk to the vetting process and any thoughts he has about this, and if you have questions about where we are, please feel free to ask him.
So probably start with the biggest difference about this policy versus what we currently have. This policy's kind of like a blanket policy, so this one policy would be geared towards the students, the faculty, staff, anybody that is an employee of or that corresponds with the school district. So instead of having faculty policy, a staff policy, a student policy, all these other policies, kind of putting it under one statement, it's a little bit longer because there's more things to cover in it, but having one policy versus multiple ones. The other thing that we're adding in there is a broader verbiage on like what a website is, or your web presence. So we want to future-proof the policy in a way, so future technologies that come down, we won't necessarily have to revisit this and change things for every new initiative that might come down, that might come into the school and whatnot. So those are kind of the two biggest changes. We did model it and seeked out a lot of input from a couple of other districts, and we would just like to have you guys look over it and get your ideas on, on your thoughts on it.
And where it is going to, it'll sunset two existing policies, one for teachers and one for students, and replace those two policies with this policy. So we would just ask that you might want to take a look at this policy and the other policies. It has been legally vetted at the, you know, London Dairy, so it's not like it hasn't been vetted, it has been vetted, but we need to take a look at it for Litchfield to make sure it's okay for us. So that's really that piece. We don't expect any feedback tonight, because what we would, you certainly can give us some feedback, but we expect you might want to take some time to go through it, and go to the next time we meet, maybe we can get to a point where we adopt it. And if that's all the board has, I can continue with another piece that I was going to bring up on the superintendent's discussion. I was talking to our new high school principal, and we were talking, he was talking about the concussion policy and concussion protocol that we currently have, and what he was concerned about was that our current concussion policy has returned to play kinds of considerations and timelines and procedures, but what we don't have is a return to school, so to speak, set of procedures, because obviously when kids get concussions, it's not just an impairment athletically, it's also an impairment to learning. And so we're going to be bringing to you at our next board meeting a rethought concussion policy, because we really have to have that whole return to school piece into the concussion policy. So we will be bringing that into you for your consideration at our next school meeting. We didn't bring it tonight, because we just didn't quite have enough time to get together our thoughts and make it cogent and, you know, succinct for you folks to take a look at it. So those are the two policy pieces that I had here tonight. The other I could do is a hiring update. I was going to give you a hiring update, I certainly could go through that hiring update right now, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Summary of where we are right now, now I'll go through more details on it. Where we are at the present time is, we have all of our positions...
This is the side of the programs.
You all set?
Yeah, go ahead.
No. We had a number of, we had thirty positions, both professional, non-professional positions. Of those positions, we have hired all of our direct contact with student, teaching, et cetera, positions, with the exception of a long-term math sub, which we have two candidates that we are currently interviewing, and we believe that we have one that we'll be bringing forward, well, we won't be bringing that candidate to you, I would go ahead under the summer powers and hire that candidate for the first day of school and bring that candidate to you. I would be candid to you that we had two math openings in the high school this summer, and we're extremely excited about the candidate that we hired, and it was not easy to secure the candidate, and I will give Bill Lonigan nothing but praise for his efforts on that part in getting our candidate, and you will see that she is a candidate who has significant experience, most recently in Pinkerton, and has a really great background in mathematics, and I think our kids will be well-served by that. However, getting the second candidate, the long-term sub, because of the nature of that position, it's not a permanent position, it's a long-term sub-position, has been a challenge, but we do feel we've got that completed now. We also have the technology teacher part-time at Griffin Memorial School, and as of today, I believe that Mr. Thompson is offering that position to one candidate, contingent upon that candidate meeting with the superintendent. So I believe that that will be wrapped up today. And then the other position that we not have is the enrichment tutor, and again, that's at GMS, and Mr. Thompson has several candidates, of which he believes one will be fine, but I can't bring that to you today. So that's, in short, we have three positions, and I'm pretty secure that all of those will be all set by the opening of day, that have direct contact with teachers. Overall, at GMS, we've hired a special ed preschool teacher, an art teacher, and a PE teacher. At LMS, we hired a grade seven science teacher, a grade five teacher, and a grade seven long-term sub in math, and a special ed teacher part-time, and we hired a STEAM teacher, a tech ed teacher, and that will, with the board's discussion later, allow us to probably make a move for one of our current teachers. In the high school, we're very fortunate, we found a .5 chemistry teacher who had retired from a position in Massachusetts, and brings to us a significant level of experience, and so she's all set. We had an English teacher, a .5 PE teacher, and again, we're very fortunate to find that .5 position, and a .5 art teacher, and we've hired a math teacher, and I think I've already stated to you that that math teacher, we're very excited about the math teacher. We hired a GMS school psychologist, and non-teaching positions, as you know, we hired a new high school principal, an IT technician, and one paraprofessional. What we have remaining in non-teaching positions, we have a long-term sub-position at GMS, we have a lunch monitor position at GMS, we have a paraprofessionals, we've interviewed a number of paraprofessionals, we just haven't finalized those offerings. We have three food service techs, we've interviewed a number of people for all those positions, we just haven't finalized that. We have one part-time custodian, and then we have a facility manager for maintenance, and I believe that we have candidates for that position, we just haven't made the final decision. So I would say overall that we're very well-staffed at this point in time, and that by the opening of school, I believe we will be fully staffed with potentially one non-direct teaching position not filled, so I think we'll be in really good shape. That sufficient?
It is. What exactly is a long-term sub?
Well, we have someone who's going to be out on a disability, on a sick leave or something like that, that we know is going to be, for instance, a family leave, we know that that person's going to be out for a period of months. Then we have someone which we would call a long-term sub, the pay scale would be slightly different than if we just had a sub coming in for a day-to-day kind of a job.
All right. Trying to look right now where we can go to.
I know, I was trying to see if the schedule's got anything else here I can jump in on. I could talk about the evaluation.
Yep.
As you all know, the district entered into doing a new evaluation process two years ago, and when I came on board last year, it was still being worked on, and I would give all the credit in the world to Scott, Tom, for their work this past year, and I say that they brought together two different groups in a collaborative way, which involved teachers and administrators, and what's come out of that discussions over the past literally ten months, has been a whole new rubric, which takes into consideration the state requirement, which was done a while back, and then a whole new evaluation system, and it's all linked into my learning plan and the other components of the district, and it has been put into a, I believe it's a 178-page document, that you folks, I believe, received electronically today, if I'm correct about that. And what the committee would like to do is to have you have a chance to take a look at that document, and then in our first meeting in September, the committee would like to come in and present to you their perspective of the evaluation instrument, and also give you somewhat of a PowerPoint presentation, summary of the key things in that evaluation instrument. And we would look to the board to act rather quickly on this, because in our contract, some of our first evaluations of professional staff are due in October, so we really need to give the principals this new document, so they can work on that for the entire year. So I believe you've already had reports from the subcommittees, but this is really a report of the entire document, and a report of the intent and the various components of the entire document. So what we are asking you to do over the course of the next couple of weeks is to preview the document. Certainly, you could put it beside your bed table and use that for sleeping pill, if you have insomnia or something, or some of you may really enjoy it, reading, but I suspect it's really dry, but it's something that is, I think it's really been done with a great deal of effort, consideration, a great deal of cooperation, and I think it represents a very fine product for the district, and I think implementation of this will be very good. In doing this, I kept harping that it's really not, it's about teacher growth. It's about ninety-five percent of what we're concerned about is teacher growth, and five percent of what we're talking about is teacher non-performance. So really, the major pieces of this, in my mind, should focus and have focused on growth, on staff development, on mentoring, on professional kinds of programs we can offer to teachers, and however, we're still doing the evaluation, as we should, but the focus is really on how do we get better at what we do.
Thanks. Questions?
Sure.
So is this part of the whole professional growth model, or is it just the observation part of it?
The whole thing. This is a whole professional, well, it's a whole professional growth and evaluation component, and observations are part of that, and classroom walkthroughs are part of that, and, you know, mentoring is part of that, so it's really, we hopefully have tied together, and I really would be interested in your feedback in terms of, you know, where you see strengths, or where you see possibilities for growth.
Well, my other question is, has the committee or anybody considered having it, we're doing the same thing in my district right now, but has anybody considered doing a, everything always looks good on paper, or things that you talk about, but a pilot year, where it's agreed to that this is what we're doing, and just to receive feedback before it moves forward?
Okay. The way I look at these documents, and I fully understand your question, I look at these as living documents, and I'm a firm believer in the, you know, continuous improvement model, so that means that we PDCA, we plan, we do, and then we take a look, we check, and see what we're doing on an annualized basis, and then we implement for the next year. So I don't look at this as a document which is finalized, I look at this more as a document that at the end of the year, we're going to sit down, and we'll go through feedback and make changes to the document that we would bring back to the board. And I think that mindset has made the teachers feel a lot more at ease about what we're doing, because they know that there will be an ongoing meeting of the committees, and these committees won't meet as often, obviously, but there will be feedback, and there will be possibility for modeling or changing the model, or, you know, changing some components of the model, adding and deleting. In terms of using it for a, for one year as a pilot for the year, we haven't had that discussion that I've heard of, it certainly is something which we could consider, however, we do have to do evaluations of teachers starting in October, so we just need to know which direction the board would like us to go. But I truly believe it's not a document that just sits there for ten years, it's something you annually revisit.
Yeah, I guess I just, you know, this will affect teachers, and I want to make sure that they have a voice in being able, some committee or somebody to go to, to be able to, if, you know, things aren't working or things need changing, it's good to know it's a living document.
Right. And the committee, the majority of the committee that will be speaking will be teachers.
Yeah.
And the teachers all had this document presented to them in each of their buildings separately, and they all had the opportunity to give feedback, and it hasn't been doing it to them. I mean, you can't have everybody at the table, but we've had really strong representation from all of the buildings and the different roles that teachers have, and we certainly went back to the teachers looking for feedback, and we really wanted to come to you folks and do it before we went any further, we wanted to make sure that we went back to teachers one more time, and to come back to you folks after the first of September. There was talk about actually coming to you folks in August, but then we felt, the committee felt that it would be better if we had our opening day, went over it one last time, and then brought it to the school board after the last review by the teachers. So that's kind of the process we've gone through, but I'm certainly very comfortable with an annual review, that's a real review, or however the board wants to handle it.
Well, should we have maybe, maybe sort of an interim, just check on how everything is going with teachers, principals, whoever wants to take part in it, maybe in January, and see how it's going so far, and then maybe, once again, revisit it in June before the end of school, maybe, and just see what...
That's a good idea.
If things are still going well, or what needs to be tweaked, and...
Right. What I would recommend is, we look at the document over the next couple of weeks, and we listen to what the teachers have to say, and I think they'd be very, very pleased and excited to hear the board with those kinds of ideas, and adopting the idea that there's going to be a formal review, a formal presentation to the board, an ongoing communication about, is this working, and how do we do it better? I mean, that'd be great. So I think that, please, you know, we got those, those ideas recorded now, but I think make those a formal, kind of a motion or whatever the board chair wishes. And I'm not speaking for the board chair, I'm speaking as superintendent. So that's what that whole evaluation document is about, and so, like I say, there has been an awful lot of good work done over the past year, in a, what I would say, a very collaborative, collegial way, and a real effort and a real attempt to try to keep everybody informed and share and get feedback, and I know that there will always be feedback in any document we do, and at some point in time, you just have to go forward.
I'm sorry, can I ask one more question?
Ask all the questions, Julie.
I'm sorry. How do you feel about, observations and stuff are extremely time-consuming, and, you know, is there, has there been a change, or is there, I don't know what observation tool they had before, but is there a change in, or write-up length, time, things like that? I mean, it's important to give feedback to teachers, but sometimes it can be all-encompassing, and there's lots of other things that principals need to do, so is that delegated, is there...
If you don't mind, I'm not trying to dodge it, I think it might be a great question for you to pose to the committee and to the teachers when they're here, and get their perspective on the whole thing. I think that's a great question to ask them, and I will just say that we have, you know, the formal kind of observations of the clinical, clinical model, it's pretty old, and we also have, we've done quite a bit with discussion about instructional rounds for classroom walkthroughs in terms of observations, and we do have those classroom walkthroughs as a component in the evaluation document, and I know that the district has also done some work outside of that particular model, and I'm trying to think of which model it is. I would, I'm quite familiar with the clinical rounds model, and they've done some work with, and I can't think of which model it is, but...
Marzano?
I'm not sure if it's Marzano or not, it may be Marzano, I can't, I just can't recall right this instant, but please, that's a great question for the teachers to give you feedback on.
All right. So I think we've gone full circle, Frank, and you're back, so...
Thank you. I apologize.
No, no problem. So you have your BA report for us?
I do. I would like to start with, there were a lot of, you know, over the past few months, there were a lot of questions and some issues that came up regarding over the past school year, student transportation, so the folks from First Student have been kind enough to grace us with their presence here this evening. They brought the team, as they refer to themselves, they must have brought, Ted, I'm going to let you introduce yourself and your team to the group, and Ted has a presentation that you'd like to make. We did have an opportunity to meet with Ted and his key folks from Nashua, that are kind of the brain-thrust, if you will, of our transportation contract. For the board's information, we are entering the third of a five-year contract with First Student, so we're right smack in the middle of the contract, current contract with them. Ted?
Okay, well, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and be here to answer questions and talk about some of the things that we have going on at First Student. First of all, I'd just like to, again, as Frank indicated, we had a meeting with Superintendent Frank and the administrative staff, and Deb and I to talk about the past year and look at, you know, how was the past year, and identify some areas where we need to focus and perhaps improve some situations, do things differently, that type of thing, so that we're ready to start the 2016-17 school year. So, again, I'm Ted LeClaire, I'm the area general manager at First Student, I oversee the Nashua Operations Center, as well as eleven other facilities in this geographic area. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to ask each of my staff to introduce themselves and just tell you what their role with our company is.
My name is Deb Gilbertson, I have been working with Transportation for Litchfield since 2005, my most current position as location manager, excuse me, as location manager for the past three and a half years.
Lauren?
Hi, I'm Lauren Makaravich, I'm dispatch, and I've been with First Student for sixteen years.
Becky Gagnon, I'm the assistant location manager, I've been with First Student for six years, three years as a driver, and currently my position.
Hi, I'm Kim Roberts, I've been with the company for sixteen years, then dispatched for thirteen.
Okay, so...
Welcome.
Welcome, absolutely. ...again, our staff, and I thought that it would be good to bring the folks that are the, you know, the day-to-day lifeline, if you will, for the transportation system for Litchfield. These are the folks that deal with, they're on the calls, schools that may have issues or have questions, they, you know, they dispatch the buses, and supervise the drivers, and communicate with them during the routes and after. Again, oversee training, oversee hiring, and assigning students, or rather, assigning drivers to bus routes, that type of thing. So I thought it would be great, and that way, if there's any particular information that they could, you know, share with you, they will. And also, I think it's great that they can hear firsthand, if you have, as a community and/or a school board, any concerns and things that you feel we need to focus on better, and that way, it's being shared with everyone directly, and we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
So, again, I can highlight just a few areas, or I can open up questions, it's really up to your, I don't have a formal presentation, because again, I want to be just...
I'll ask a question I've asked Frank, and that was, one of the things we asked Frank to do was to go to you guys, take a look at routes right now, as they exist, or as they existed last year, and whether or not we could alleviate some pressure off a couple of bus routes that seem to have a lot of kids on the buses, and spread them out a little bit. And what we'd asked, and I don't know if you'd presented one or not, is if we can get the bus routes almost like an overlay, so we can see where the routes are, and, you know, I guess even between ourselves, take a look and say, hey, can we move over here to pick up kids in a bus over here, if it's feasible?
Yeah, Deb probably is, that's qualified the answer, the specifics about the routes.
Yep.
I do know that you're still working on the routes for this current school year, and certainly have shared, you know, some of that concern. But Deb, if you had, I think, addressed some of the, you know, I guess, issues and things that have to be taken into account when routes are being...
The biggest challenge that we always have is getting the amount of students, the ones that are paying for their tickets and such for the high school, so we had discussed that this year. Typically, what we do is we take what we have for information to bring them up to the next year, so the eighth graders to nine. them up to the next year, so the eighth graders to nine, and so on, you know, and we do the best we can with establishing routes with that information. The ridership, typically it takes about two, three weeks before we have a head count, a solid head count, because there are kids that will ride the first couple of weeks, and then fade off, parents will bring them. Once we have those head counts, where it's a little easier to then readjust routes. So we should always start with what we have for information, and then just keep making modifications from there. As far as your question with the mappings and the overlays, we had done that, I had done that with Frank, when we had gone down to nine buses. We certainly can do that, again, as a matter of, do you want it prior to the adjustments that happen, or prior to. Either way, it is a little time-consuming, because it is all manual, but it can happen.
So going back to my concern as far as the buses and capacity, there were two bus routes last year that-
Three and seven.
Correct. And if you look at the numbers of ridership on those two buses, in comparison to the rest of them, it's probably double what everyone else has. And looking at some of the buses, as far as their route, almost looks like it overlaps some of those, and possibly it can be spread out a little bit more.
With Art, I'll have you talk about the history with what you're using, but for overlapping of different buses, some of them will cross areas, but it's more so of doorstop. That's going to be more of our concern. You have certain roads in town that we want to do the door side by Pine Crest and 3A, so we're going to have buses crossing over for that reason. We want to make it as time efficient as we can. That's more what you're going to see the cross over to four. What other have we found?
Well, just with the overloaded buses, you know, they're to capacity, the bus one and bus seven, it's just logistically where they're located, and to bring a bus that's further down this end of town, up there, now you're lengthening the time, students are on the buses. So we didn't want to do that either. So utilize, because the north end of town is where we lost a bus, that's where we just take that bus away from. It just made more sense that way, and the numbers fit, they fit in the bus, they just were a little bit heavier than the self-able buses.
And, of course, when the population changes, the routes are going to change as well, and that's what we have found over the years. So with that, we just make the adjustments that are needed as we get the head counts.
Just add, also, I mean, one of the things we run into in any community, but I think Litchfield probably has more of it, is again, is a time factor. So when you've got a bus that has three tiers, just use an example, in the morning, with a high school run, being its first run, you can stop that as early as you'd like, and cover as much territory. The problem is, the following schools, you've got a window of so much time to get that bus around, to pick up where it needs to go. And a lot of times, we're fighting distance and the time it takes versus the number of students that we put on that run, we just don't have the flexibility to have a bus go from one area down to another, make it to school on time, or to the next school in the afternoon on time.
So you mentioned that you'll take a look at your student count from the prior year, and then you've determined as far as routes that way.
Yeah.
Do you, at the same time, like, look at feasibility of possibly limiting another bus, or two buses? I mean, is that something you do, like, on a regular, I'm just, I'm asking because the budget committee's going to ask-
Right.
-in a few weeks, so-
When we first started all of this, we had 12 buses, we've come down to nine. When we first talked about going down to the nine, Frank and I had talked about possibly going to the eight, and at that point, it was tough to make it the eight and not change bell times. That is about the only way that you're going to be able to reduce anymore, is if you're going to change bell times.
It really all came down to just that issue, was the bell schedule at the middle and the elementary school. Well, actually, all.
Yes.
Well, looking at ridership, I mean, if you look at ridership, if we could stagger bell times by an hour each school, you'd probably only need three buses. And I realize, I mean, that's not, you just can't do that.
It'd be expensive, though. Could they be on the road so long?
It would be. 24/7.
So, at this point, are you going to wait for the start of the year, and take a look at it, and then determine whether or not you can shift-
Yes.
-get some different buses?
I can give it a couple weeks. And then, we tell the parents when they call and say, hey, our bus is done, well, we do a ridership after a couple weeks, because like I said, some of the parents decide that, okay, no, I'm just going to drive my kids to school, and that's fine. And some routes are just a lot less than it starts from the first couple weeks, so once we have those head counts, after two, three weeks, and the third week is when we usually start it, then we have a better idea, and we can make some adjustments.
Can I ask if it would be a problem to get a head count every week? I mean, it seems like it'd be pretty simplistic. You just count the kids that they come on the bus?
Weekly, it sounds very simple, but I'd rather-
Thirty kids, one, two, three, four, five, thirty.
I would rather do it a little less frequent if we had to do it, because it's also taking away the driver's attention from what, therefore, the kids safety. To do it, you know, every so often-
Couldn't the bus driver do it as they exit?
They can, but one, they're exiting, depending on where they are, they're also counting kids, making sure that the kids are getting to the parent, making sure that parent is the right person that's picking them up.
I'm talking, once they arrive at school.
At school, yes, we could do it there.
But that way, they won't be distracted, they're stopped, they're at the school. And I think weekly counts, to be honest, if it, I mean, you know what you can do, what you can't do, but it seems like it would be pretty simplistic. And I think that would give us a much more accurate number count, spread across the amount of weeks. The problem is, you start, like, with GMS, they have Chorus that starts up early, so there's one day there that the count will be off. So if you pick, like, a Thursday or Friday where nothing's going on, it seems like you can get more accurate counts on a regular basis, if that's possible. And I realize, I don't want to do when the students are entering the bus, or when they're being dropped off, but if we can do it when they get dropped off in the morning at school, I mean-
Typically, when we do the head counts, we do it for a solid week.
Yep.
And it's that solid week, we look at the average from that week.
Yeah, that way you get it every day, and you see what the trends are, and the patterns.
Right.
Because you, as you say, you have activities that may go on that, whatever, or something that may affect it on a daily basis.
So when you do the head count for a week, how often throughout the year do you do that?
Typically, upon request.
Yeah.
And when we see that there's issues, you know, when we see that there's buses that are a little heavier, you know, whether it be parent calls, or Frank lets us know, or the drivers let us know, hey, having some trouble getting them seated.
Yeah, and keep in mind, we're talking about buses that may be crowded, they're certainly not overloaded. Again, the capacity on a bus for middle school students is seventy-seven.
Like seventy, yep.
You know, so, but that's seventy-seven students who may be, you know, getting up there in size and dress, and that's three in a seat, so, again, buses appear crowded, but again, if we have an overload situation, we don't allow the bus to continue, and we address it, and then we make any, whatever adjustment needs to be made.
The buses, as far as age, is there a point where the bus is taken off the road?
Yeah, our contract requires that buses are not to be more than nine years old, older than nine.
Older than nine. And how close are we right now on our buses that serve Litchfield?
Many of them are nine years old, and we're in the process of replacing some of those buses.
Will that be taking place this year?
Yeah, yeah, we actually, we have, in our company, what we'll do is, we'll bring buses from another district that we can utilize here, so we'll move those buses around. The glitch we run into occasionally is that sometimes the other district is waiting for other buses to replace theirs-
Right.
-so they can't give them up, say, to us, until their buses are there. And, again, if you, especially when you're talking about new buses, if they're waiting for new buses, then that's relying upon production at the factory and delivery. So, we have buses on site right now that are being, gone through, re-registered to, in New Hampshire, and will be put into service. And then we have other buses that also will be coming to us, newer buses than what the current fleet is, will be putting them into service.
I guess my only other question is, because I know that we run into this several times through the course of the year, that a bus will be running late, or a breakdown. Can you just explain to the board what the process is of notifying either the school, students?
As far as the school, our dispatch team, whoever's dealing with that, would notify the school, call the school. As far as parents, if it's-
No, sorry, as soon as a bus breaks down, they have radio contact with dispatch?
Yeah, the driver would report to dispatch, and then dispatch will make a decision about how to deal with that situation. In some cases, it may be, if we have a bus in the area that we can use, it's already on the road to replace it, we'll do that, because it's quicker, quicker response. In other cases, we need to send a bus out of a Nashua facility to replace it. But usually, with Litchfield, I believe, you try to use something that's already in town.
Already here.
So that the delay is minimized.
And I'm certain, once we get our Twitter account, we can then notify-
Bingo. Five seconds.
Because I know that happens several times through the year, the bus will break down, and it's always when it's in inclement weather, it seems like, so the kids are out there waiting, and you're wondering, did I miss the bus, is it still coming? So, I mean, it's more our end of how we can notify.
Yeah, again, our main priority is to notify the school, let them know what's going on, even if it's on the way home, as long as we can reach somebody, or we'll call the office here, but to notify somebody. And the same would be true in an accident, if the bus was involved in an accident, or delayed because of an accident that, you know, blocked the road, we would notify the local-
Twitter.
Yeah, Twitter. Are any of buses equipped with other interior, exterior cameras?
They're outdated right now, and especially with the changeover, we're going to be doing some of those changes with the cameras.
I just ask, I mean, I don't know if any in the industry, if they have exterior cameras.
Exterior, no.
No, okay. I just, unfortunately, at the bus stop where my kids get picked up, and I'm sure others, that once every three weeks, four weeks, the car just blows right past the bus, and of course, the bus driver just leans on your horn, and the people just keep going. In the industry, do any buses have, like, exterior cameras, would catch that and take a picture of it?
Yeah, actually, there's, there are programs available where buses are equipped with that, as long as the state allows it, and they actually will take a photo. And in some states, they're able, that company is able to send that to the Department of Motor Vehicles, who will issue a citation based on the photo of the plate.
Yep.
Now, that's been challenged in some states, too, so it all depends on the particular state, but there are some districts that are using those cameras, and try to cut down on those violators, and those lights. But certainly, I mean, that's something we can look at.
Also, the drivers, if they can get the plate, description, car, anything, we try, but we do have a form that we submit to the department if we can get them that.
They go by a little too quickly, and-
A lot of the times, that is the case, yes.
And the concern, especially here in Litchfield, you've got two main roads, you've got Albuquerque and you've got 3A. And I'm certain, because I'm off Albuquerque, so I'm certain there are other stops along that road, that it happens on a frequent basis.
We had a situation a couple of years ago, we cooperated with the Litchfield Police Department, and they actually put a cruiser alongside that was, the bus that was taking a while to load a student, and people didn't want to wait while that was taking place, and even though the bus driver has to keep the red lights on until all students are secure on the bus. And we contacted Litchfield PD, and they, they put a stop to that. Yeah, so it was, you folks contacted us, we contacted them, it worked out.
Just an observation, and a couple of questions. Observation is that, in communication this week with the elementary principal and middle school principal, what they're reporting is an increased number of new student registrations. And we're actually, we don't have any numbers right now, and we don't know what the immigration looks like, students leaving, but it looks like we're going to have eight, 10, 12, 15 new students at both schools. So it may mean that some of your routes will have to be revisited rather quickly, and so I would just appraise you of that. And I have two questions, one kind of tongue-in-cheek and one serious. My tongue-in-cheek question is, who gets the new buses?
You mean which routes?
No, which towns? How come we don't get new buses?
That's generally stuff that's negotiated into the contract, because when you're talking about an age requirement, that's where it would-
So we get the nine-year-old buses, and they get the one-year-old buses?
Who's "they"?
The other districts. That's what we want to know, we want to be them.
We haven't been able to figure out the age yet.
Well, they know, because they, you know, because you buy them.
That's right, and generally speaking, our contracted prices reflect the age of the bus, because there is a, a new bus today costs approximately $30,000 more to purchase than a bus six years ago.
Well, that doesn't surprise me at all. I have a very dear friend who's in your business, and he buys new buses, and I can tell you a bit about them, but not tonight. But at any rate-
Well, I also think that-
-tongue-in-cheek, but quite serious, I don't understand why we have nine-year-old buses out there for our children. I know it's in our contract, but that's just an observation. My second question is, last year, the same buses were, I think it was three and seven we've talked about, is that correct?
Yeah, it's one and seven.
Were quite crowded all year, and we did, we did bus counts-
It's one, yeah.
Is that?
One and seven.
One and seven, and we did bus counts, I recall, at least twice during the year, and as I recall, one and seven had, at least in the 50s for ridership, and the other buses had 30s, and in some cases, 40s or less. And I'm just asking, you say that you're going to try to do a balancing of the ridership, and I understand you deal with route length, and you deal with distribution, and you deal with the size of the town, but I would ask you to try to do that as quickly as possible. I truly believe that, once we wait more than a couple of weeks, parents kind of either throw their hands up in the air and say, I'll transport my own kids, or kids get used to a service that is not really appropriate for our children. So I would just ask for you to take a look at that balancing as quickly as possible, and to consult and work with us, and see if we can't balance those two, because I must have had 10 calls at least during the year about those, and several emails. I know the board had contact with parents, and I understand that we're not legally at the limit, but we would like to see if we couldn't get that balance done as quickly as possible, just so that people don't throw their hands up in the air and say, okay, I'll transport my own kids, because all that does is create, you know, not necessarily great feelings about who we are as a district. So I appreciate all your hard work, I appreciate your concern for safety, I appreciate your communication with us, and I would just ask you to continue that, and if you can get us the answer as to where the new buses go, and balance the routes as quickly as possible, we'd be very happy. Thank you.
And certainly, we will focus on those two runs-
Thank you.
Obviously, right away, and do what we can to, at least, if we can't seem to fix a problem, at least we can explain what the problem is, why we, why we're not able to just easily move a bus to pick, you know-
And I think communication and discussion back and forth, the dialogue, allows us to understand that you folks are really looking at these issues and trying to address them. We don't have any dialogue, and we feel like, and you feel like the same way, that we're ignoring you, or you're ignoring us. So I think if we can have that dialogue, it'll go a long way towards us feeling like we're really trying to get that thing solved.
All right.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us. We look forward to a smooth, great startup for the school year.
Yeah, we do, too. No breakdowns, no late buses, everybody's happy.
That's our goal.
And I got the rose-colored glasses to prove it.
No sleeping children, because that's a big priority with our drivers, is that they check their buses after every run.
Absolutely.
And after they park it and leave it, so, you know, that's our, our one focus, and we've been very successful with our team and our drivers.
Right. And we appreciate, I want to personally thank you, because, you know, I've had opportunity to talk with you folks in the mornings at 5:00 AM, and I found people very cooperative and very straightforward, and I do appreciate that dialogue.
We look forward to that dialogue.
Oh, I don't. I don't. I'll be quite candidly, I do not.
Can I ask one more, just one more question of clarification? I know at different times, the buses on my kid's route, they won't drop a child off, because there's not a parent or someone waiting for them. Is there an age where that stops?
Typically, we like to have the kindergarten kids and first graders never dropping out someone there. After time, the driver does get to know their kids, you know, and I say their kids, because every driver feels every busload is their own. And so once they get to know their kids, it can be a sixth grader, it can be, you know, a third grader, it doesn't matter, if they see a parent that's there every day, and one day they're not, they're to hold that child back onto the bus, call into dispatch, and tell them that, okay, I have so-and-so, I'll go back later if someone's there. And typically, it does generate, when the child hasn't come home, it'll generate a phone call, and then dispatch can let them know, yep, Johnny's still on the bus, driver will bring him around once the route is complete and still one's there.
So, like you said, kindergarten, first grade, they're kind of a little bit more concerned, but the others, it's more or less by feel?
It's more- It's more so by getting to know the, the kids, the parents that are there all the time, yes.
Yeah, their routine, because the change in that routine might mean there's a problem. And, and also, whether the student is comfortable getting off, because there are some students that, you know, if their parent wasn't there, and that's usually the way that it is, then they're not comfortable, so we don't want to drive them.
So what happens when you have a substitute bus driver?
Well, typically, we have notes. The drivers will leave notes in their route books, and they take a look at their route books beforehand. We also try to keep, the spare drivers that do go out, we try to keep the ones that are familiar with Litchfield and the routes are the first ones to go out here first. So they're, they're more familiar with the town and the kids.
I just have a quick question too, about what, what can parents do about having stops on a street change? I ran into this when my kids were little, and they were going to the elementary school. And as, you know, as, as time goes by, kids who were little, you know, they, they grow up and they advance on, and then you have just a handful of kids that are on the street for a stop, and the stop used to be, you know, at the end where all the kids were. And now, you know, they have to walk halfway down the street or more to, to either get to the bus stop or after they're dropped off. And I did call the bus company one, one time and ask if I could have that moved, because we were near a curve, and people drove down the street like maniacs, and they didn't see little kids who'd just gotten off the bus. Tried to get the bus stop moved on the street, so that it would be right at the houses where the kids were getting on and off. And, and I was told that couldn't happen, I know there was some sort of process. Can you tell us what the process is, in case parents want to have a stop changed? How do you do that?
Typically, once we have the routes, and we're ready to, Frank, to review, we try to stick with those stops as solid as we can, because we don't want to increase more and more stops. It's going to increase the time to the route, it's going to make us later more.
I'm talking about changing the stops. So if there's one stop on the street, right?
Then you have the situation where it could be a change or something like that. The process is going to be to notify us, notify Frank's office, and then we review it, you know. If, if it's something that either Frank goes out, I go out, Lori sometimes will go out, we'll go and review the, the logistics of it. And if it's, you know, not a big deal, okay, we, we have to move it, and we notify the driver, and it starts to happen as soon as possible. If there's an issue with it, that would be communicated with Frank's office and us. And go forward from there. Does the parent have any recourse after that? It, it would be up to Frank's office to make that final decision, to let us know.
See now, your request was before I came on board, because I must say, in my three years, we've been able to make just about all requested adjustments to routes, and they were really, I wouldn't say adjustments, they were tweaks. You say, instead of picking them up here, can we move over there? We have denied a few, that I never realized how many cul-de-sacs are in Litchfield to get to where I needed to go. I didn't think I could go much further, but for the most part, we, we've been able to make those little adjustments, if you will, and, and the, and the bus company's been very cooperative with that as well, so.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Come back anytime you'd like.
Thank you.
And anytime you'd like us here, just let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Ted.
Good night.
Thanks to your team, thank you.
Bye. Thank you, Jim, for, for bringing up that issue about the cost, though, and the age of the buses. I'm glad you brought that up, because it seems that our bus contracts, we, we're, our costs are going up and up and up, and yet the buses are getting older and older and older, so we're, we're not getting what we're paying for, I, I don't think.
Well, it is, we, we did have a discussion when Superintendent and I met with them last week, two weeks ago. And that was one of the topic issues. It was, it was an opportunity to sit down and do a year review, if you will, and also look at preparation for the upcoming school year. And one of the topics was, and I noticed it the first day of school, around all three buildings, the buses coming in, they were dirty, they were rusty, they were, just didn't look good. And I made that comment, and made that aware to, to the bus company, that, you know, and we've had, Ted and I have had a debate, what is a nine-year-old bus? And he wants to play with when it goes into service. It might be this year, and, and it's a nine-year-old, it's a ten, to me, I look at it, it's a 10-year-old bus. Well, it's really nine because it came into service, and I said, "No, no, no, no." It's, I go by its year. And if, if, if those buses need to be replaced, when they commit to service is not an issue to me. And I did ask him, that the buses need to be cleaned up, not just in appearance, and they, they had, they had a rough year with the buses.
Ted, I was wondering too, because there were a lot of breakdowns this past year. Is that, I'm kind of new to tracking that.
We had an unusual amount of breakdowns this year.
Okay.
No question.
And it, you know, you alluded to the fact that we might be getting
Right.
newer buses in our fleet
Right.
this coming year, so is that?
Uh, we're waiting.
We're hoping to alleviate some of that?
Yeah. I, I will get a list, and I'd be happy to share it with the committee when that comes in. They are to give me a list of all the buses that will be providing service to the district prior to the start of school.
Is there language in the, in the contract that we have with them about, you know, things like delays and late buses and breakdowns? Are we, you know, is at some point, are they not upholding their end of the bargain? And is that outlined in the contract?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, it, I mean, it does, it talks more procedurally if there's a breakdown, unless you're hurt this evening, what they should, you know, the communication with
Right.
with the principals and so on and so forth. But they would need to be extended, you know, a constant to hold them responsible for not living up to the contractual obligation, yeah. They, they do keep an extra bus in the district. Part of the issue is when a bus breaks down, they're, they're headquartered over in Nashua, so to get a bus to cover for that bus, say in the morning, is very, very difficult. So what they try to do is if there is a breakdown, they have the other buses kind of expand their pickup area.
Yep.
It needs to get better. It was, and I, and I did say this, I'm sorry, to, to Ted in our meeting, that it was, again, my three years here now, and last year was probably the more difficult, fielding, you know, concerns from parents, from the superintendent, and addressing those concerns with the bus company, and not necessarily always being on the same page. So, that's why we brought them in. We had that meeting, and, and I thought it was important for them to be here this evening, so that you folks could ask those questions as well.
I don't think I ever saw anybody turn as dark a shade of red as he did when you asked him about that. About the cost and the age and of the buses.
Is there any district policy or anything about who is responsible for drop-off, if they wait for a parent or not, and if they bring them back? Like, when, when does, when does the school district transfer responsibility?
What they do is they drive around the route and then bring them back to the same, their stop.
I, I understand that, but for those who know the parents and know that they can be left off, right, or they're okay to walk home, that, that's a school, that's the bus saying, like, just making that decision, that's that bus driver making that decision. And I didn't know if there was a policy or something on where the school district is liable till, like, when does that exchange hands?
No, I think that's.
Because in most districts, I believe, the policy is, you're, you're responsible till they get off the bus.
That's correct.
And do we want them making that decision?
Right, who's call is it?
Whose call is it?
Yeah, I think there's two questions. One, what the RSA is regarding transportation, and one is what the district policy is. I couldn't give you the exact wording on each one, but we will have that for you next meeting.
Yeah, I just.
But I believe the RSA is pretty clear that the district is responsible for the kids from the point in time when they get on the bus till the point in time when they get off the bus. And with most districts that I've been associated with, with the kindergarten or younger kids, we really don't want to release them unless we have a parent present to accept custodial role over the child, or, you know, an adult. And, and so I would think we could take a look at the policy. The other thing, Frank, that I think would be interesting to look at in the contract, given that we're in the middle of this contract, is what are the performance expectations of the bus company that I possibly look at? I am concerned about our kids riding nine-year-old buses, I am concerned about the number of mechanical breakdowns that we experienced last year. And for the record, I am concerned that on the buses that had 50s, there wasn't much real adjustment through the year in the number of kids. And I'm assuming, which I don't like to do, that it was because the routes didn't allow themselves for adjustment, but I would like to take a real hard look at that. So I'd like to take a look at policy, I'd like to take a look at what contractual, I'd be glad to do that, I know that, you know, you've got a lot on your plate. What contractually we have for expectations for performance, that if they're in, if they're out of performance, that we have some kind of remedy. And, and I think we should take a look at those things, if for no other reason, just I'm not, I don't know about the board, I'm not quite as pleased with the presentation as I might have been, just leave it at that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Shall I continue on, Mr. Chair?
You may.
This time of year, as you know, is probably the most important part of a monthly financial report, is how did we do in the previous fiscal year? I do want to give, I guess, a shout-out to, to the SAU team and the administrative team from the three schools working in collaboration. The financial audit for 2016 is complete. We did it in three, record, three days, when it typically takes five days for the auditors to come in. I'm not sure how much of a cost savings that will be, we'll, we'll know when we get the final bill from the financial auditors. But the team really did a great job. This, this was, without a doubt, my easiest audit with, with the outside auditors, and it was very clean. We had a few deficiencies that were noted that you'll see in the final report. One is just something that we have no control over, which our invoice is coming in dated prior to the purchase order. That's, that's a, that's an age-old, that we'll never, never be able to change that. But I want to thank the, the team administrators, assistants from the schools, and the SAU staff, Michelle, and, and Colleen, Holly, and Anne, and everybody that worked real hard to pull it all together. I provide you with some fund balance, fund balance report, if you will, for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2016. And I won't go through all the, but if you have any questions on any of the fund balances, but probably the most important one that everyone wants to focus on would be the general fund balance, which is the, the fund that impacts the taxes for the following year. I gave you a quick summary of the fund balance, the beginning fund balance, it, it's under the title, Fund Balance Fiscal Year 2016, the general fund. We started with a, a fund balance of 565,013, and it shows projected revenue, projected expenditures, and also we have this line called reserve from commerces. And then we have the $100,000 that will be transferring out to the capital reserve funds that were voted on by the residents for the transfer of $50,000 each to the two capital reserve funds. And it gives us an ending fund balance for the general fund of $238,728. That will go to offset the taxes, so that will be a credit, if you will, for next year's taxes. So it is, it is, it is approximately a little, a little less than half of what it was last year. I'm going to pause and see if anybody's got a question on that.
Frank, I, I know that most special ed and regular at the end just falls on the general fund.
Right.
But do you have a breakdown of what was left from special ed?
If you go to the next page. Expenditures fiscal year 2016.
Yep.
General fund, three columns. District-wide, regular, special services.
All right. I didn't, I didn't go down far enough.
You got it.
So.
So, so district-wide, we had, and I gave you the, the major categories, if you will, the function areas, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies. District-wide, $19,741,563. And then the breakdown goes over there to regular ed, $15,727,227. And then special services, $4,014,336.
Got a little close this year, huh?
Yeah. Four grand left, huh?
He told me to spend down the general fund.
I like it.
Just a little side note to that, it was negative for a while. And I went into Anne and said, "Anne, you got to find me," and I gave the exact figure, or she found me a little bit more than I needed, so that's why it came in the positive.
I'm not supposed to tell us that.
Huh?
You're not supposed to tell us that part.
I know. No, there was a, there was an accounting adjustment we made.
So, as you can see, the percent of total appropriation, we, we spent as a district over 98% of the appropriation for the budget. For a regular ed, we spent 99.97%, and a special services, 91.92. And you can see the balances there, $4,715 for regular and $352,889. And I provided you a percentile breakdown of, again, those functional areas, and you can see district-wide, 77% of our funds appropriated to the school district go to salaries and benefits. And that actually is a little bit higher for regular ed, it's, it's around 78% for regular ed, and you can see it's a little less for special services. So that will give you the breakdown of 2016.
And then we start a new year.
And we start a new year. Provide you with a copy, and as the board requested, each month, I'll provide you with just the monthly transfers, budget transfers that were made. And I think last year, I gave you a running tab of all the, this, this year, it will just be per month. So in, in your packet is the budget transfers for the first period or in July of fiscal year 2017. I did also provide some, some detail, if you will, of fiscal year 16 breakdown, and I provided you some financial reports to that as well. So I, for the sake of time, I, I will present to you a fiscal year 2017, but not a whole lot is happening right now. I can tell you that we have, the budget is in, it's loaded. Right now, we're actually functioning with three budgets, we've got 2016, 2017, and fiscal year 2018 is open budget developer right now. So it makes an interesting time for the folks working in the SAU, trying to keep track of everything, so.
Michelle, afford this to the budget committee?
Yes.
Do you need a motion to approve budget transfers?
To approve the budget transfers.
I'll move to approve the budget transfers. Second?
Any discussion?
You want to do either?
Here or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stayed?
I have one other request, Mr. Chair, if I may. Mr. Pelletier, good-looking gentleman to my right, has made a request that we continue to spend down, as, as the auditors have said, they've asked us to, to spend down the E-rate balances. So Jason has made a request to spend down the current E-rate line. We have a little bit more money than we first thought, because we were able to, even though we had permission of the board to spend down some E-rate, we were able to, through the general fund, spend some money as, kind of supplemented as well. So our current E-rate balance on the books is $67,825.54. Jason would like to spend $7,120, $22, I'm sorry, for a new antivirus, and we'll still have a little bit over $60,000 remaining in the E-rate, which will go to fund part of his equipment requirements as part of the five-year strategic plan. We'll be looking at the E-rate to do that, so.
So who's asking us to spend it down?
The, the artists don't like, we, we basically have had it in the bank, if you will. We've been carrying it as a deferred revenue on the balance sheet now, I'd say, a good five years. We've just been taking in the E-rate funds and not spending down, and again, the intent of the, of the program, the E-rate program, is to put that technology back into the schools. So when the artists were reviewing the high balances we had in E-rate, they made a strong recommendation to us that we start looking at funding specifically in the areas that it was intended.
I'm sure knowing Jason, he'll find ways to spend that money this year.
Pulling in the reins and Jason.
Well, it, it stands to reason, I mean, the money's given to increase technology.
Right.
Rather than bankrolling and like, like, why not use it?
Right.
How much is that again?
Uh, $60,000.
And how much is the NIS?
Uh, so.
So I'll ask a question, especially where Mr. Perez is here, going to be talking one-on-one in a little bit. Why can't we use the rest of the monies and just buy tablets?
Or like Chromebooks or, or things like that?
Would that fall in that category or not?
You could use that for, for increased technology like that. The only thing is it's that large amount, that large sum isn't going, we're not going to see that every year.
Right.
So, so like when we talk about like one-to-one and things like that, as it goes forward each year, that, that cost is going to go down. And then E-rate also, the amount that we're getting back every year is dwindling down significantly too. But I don't think that it's out of the realm of possibilities to talk about it until that, until that fund is completely gone.
Is the $7,000, is that for, to, to purchase the software, is it for a one-year subscription?
Uh, that's for the purchase and the one-year subscription. So there'll be, it's, yeah, right around there, like somewhere around in the high fives for renewal after.
Is it just for all the district servers and PCs and stuff, or?
Correct, yeah, so it's a cloud service, 900 licenses for, for antivirus. This, last year we had a lot of those crypto viruses that came in. A lot of the, the antivirus that we currently have, it's Microsoft antivirus. And it just doesn't seem to be doing the job properly. Lots and lots of viruses where we have to redo people's machines, there's lots of downtime. So, and then this would also protect them as they go out, as there's more mobile devices. It'll protect people when they're at home and not just in the building.
How are we on infrastructure-wise at each building for supporting more devices that we purchase? Like, are we all set, are we pretty, so?
Yeah, so this-
You know, when you go to purchase all, you know, any of the infrastructure to make sure they're all up and running and we're not
Yeah.
waiting for things to upload and?
Yeah, no, very good question. So this summer, we upgraded the connectivity between all the buildings. Every building also has updated wireless. So the same type of wireless that we put in the high school to support one-to-one and everything last year is now at each one of the buildings we put in this summer. We increased internet bandwidth, we increased the bandwidth between schools, some networking, everything like that. So we can, we can handle a lot more devices than we were able to before. But there's always that, that limit.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if we're purchasing more devices, money like that, we better use infrastructure if we're not ready for it, but seems like we're pretty well.
Yeah, right now, we're, we're pretty solid. And then if we were to do that, do, let's say, one-to-one for, for next year or whatever, say, an extra 150 devices. Currently, we can handle that.
Do we have any other questions? So we need a motion for your monies?
Please.
I'm sorry, how much was $7,000?
$7,122.
$122.
Yep.
Make a motion to approve $7,000 out of the E-rate funds for antivirus software.
$7,122.
$7,122.
Second. Second.
Further discussion? Calls in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I think that's all you have, right Frank?
Uh, it's just some general information. I did provide you just a quick note on the report format. We did, we were able to develop using the, an outside consultant, the reports format, that will provide now three years of actual, year-to-date actual to the budget comparison and then show the, the 2018.
Will that be on our rolling usage?
Yes.
Good.
Yep, so every time we print that report, it'll update the year-to-date.
Excellent. All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Perez, you're up. The AC's working here, huh? Looks like the AC's working in here.
That was the only one.
You see that in the manifest, nice.
That $4,000 just popped the window.
I don't know if you got this, I don't know if you're on the real yet, so. I know Michelle sent out the report, so if you, if you want a hard copy, Jay, I don't know if you actually got it. Thank you, Mike. So really, for tonight, just giving you a quick update, giving you a quick proposal. I was planning on coming back on September 7th for any questions, things like that, just because I wasn't able to get it to you last week, so, but I still wanted to come tonight. So currently, you know, going into next year, we still have the 38 students. Again, for freshmen coming in, we had another 38 students enroll in the one-to-one program. So for the sophomores, class of 2019, we're going to be having humanities, which is the world studies, English and social studies. We'll have a Spanish one and an honors bio. And then humanities for a class of 2020, we'll have a humanities, which is the community individual, Spanish one as well, and then the freshman science. Now, the interesting thing that's going to happen is the honors bio is actually going to be mixed. So there'll be a few freshmen and a few sophomores, so that'll be an interesting mix. So that'll be some interesting things to look at going forward. The academic data, you'll see the charts. What I really, what we really did was we pulled from Alex Skreli, who teaches the English. And because he's kind of the common teacher. So he teaches an actual one-to-one class and a non-one-to-one class. So he's kind of like the common denominator teacher. So we pulled his data and we, the charts you'll see as you look through, and you can look through it on your own, and I'll answer any questions now or even next, next board meeting. But we looked at semester one grades, the one-on-one students compared to the non-one-to-one as a whole class. And then we compared his, his one-to-one class versus his non-one-to-one class. And you'll see the difference in grades in that as well. Then on, on the bottom of the first page of the memo, I did a current enrollment data for the next five years. So I went all the way down to the fifth graders this year at 105. Sixth graders, 122, seventh graders, 111, and then the current eighth graders coming in is at 121, according to Infinite Campus. So if you turn to the, the second page, the proposal right now, Jason and I met. So we averaged a range of 105 to 125 students coming into the high school per year over the next four years. Right now, currently, that price would be about $200 a unit for a Chromebook. And then another $26 per unit for the software. And I also put a note that that number may fluctuate depending on the year. So, and then the next, I put the proposed budget amount for one-to-one technology per year, and I broke it up per year for the next four years. And you'll see those costs. Estimated total cost for next year, what we'd be looking at budget for just the Chromebooks is about $29,606 for the freshman class. Then I would, and I believe Jason and I decided that that would go into, that would be proposed by your budget.
Right.
And then Principal Lonergan and I would be looking to get an estimated $2,500 a year for professional development for teachers. And what we want to do with that is, per year, send four to five teachers to the Google Summit workshops around New England. That costs about $270 a person. So depending on four to five people, it'd be about $1,080 to about $1,300. And then we would request another $1,200 just for other professional development opportunities. They have the big Granite State Technology Summit in Manchester every year, bringing in not just a guest speaker, but someone to really work with our teachers on either Google Classroom or new technology integration. So we'd be looking for like $2,500 per year for professional development. Continued concerns and issues, this is the one that's come up every year that we've been doing this program, student equity within the program. Scheduling is another big one. So just general scheduling. Jody does a great job scheduling, but it's, she has to handpick, so she handpicks these kids that sign up, so. And it gets kind of tough because they don't always get what they, they're requesting for electives and things like that because she has to handpick and hand-schedule these, these certain kids. So yeah, they're in the one-to-one, but they may not get some of the other electives that they're, they're getting where if we're all one-to-one, all, all the same. The other, the other concern that has, we've mentioned in the past is grade 11. The program in the humanities kind of is nonexistent because of the two-levelization. We have the honors American and then the general American.
Mike, do you go back to the student, sure, if they can't get the electives that they're looking for, the class they're looking for, because they're on one-to-one?
Yeah, so like if they, they might have been able to fit in a humanities, let's say, F and, B and F. But the, the, so if they, if we put them in a non, if we put them in a humanities class, B block and F block, they may be able to get something A and E block. Whereas the, the one-to-one is A and E block freshman year. So we have to lock that in as the one-to-one. So those kids that signed up have to be in, in A and E. So that may, that may mess up some of their electives.
But that's what I'm asking, so do we notify them and let them decide whether or not?
Well, usually on the course selections, they put an alternative. So, you know, they'll put their first, first choice, second choice when it comes to electives, so. The other possibility when it comes to course scheduling is we're in, it's early stages, but we're in early stages of looking at a possible pre-advanced placement model for the 10th grade humanities. That's a, that's been a conversation that we've started, and we may be looking at that even going forward. And then the other scheduling issue is, with all the different levels of math students, we can't, we can't put a math, we can't build a one-to-one pilot in the math, in a math class. Which would be really nice to be able to have a one-to-one class running some math. And then professional development for teachers.
So if we, if we look at your estimates and we, and the board or the town page for the Chromebook going forward, student equity is not a concern, and they won't correct, or is there still a concern there?
Well, I think every, every freshman would have a Chromebook. So that, that equity piece of everyone having a Chromebook, everyone would have the equity of having their own Chromebook, yeah. And then there's other details too about, you know, some of the other questions that have come up. And Jason and I have been talking about that is what happens when the Chromebook breaks. Like, say, they drop their Chromebook or they lose their Chromebook. You know, we've been looking at, and we've been talking to other schools, like Bedford, they break their Chromebook, they break their cord, their power cord. They're paying for their, their replacement. If they refuse to replace, if they refuse to replace it, we have loners, day loners. And that's why in the estimate, the 20, like the first year, I put $29,606. That's with an extra 10 Chromebooks a year added on to that.
I'm thinking too, the student can purchase insurance, correct? And if we were to give, even if we were to give them one, they can purchase insurance to cover it?
Jay, how, can we talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, if it was school-provided and the parent wanted to do that, I, I, we should be able to make, make a program for that. That should be a possibility. Right now, for the, for the one-to-one pilot that we're doing right now, the Chromebook around, there's 11-inch HP that's right around that $200 break. Right now, for one-year coverage, full coverage is $19. So it's pretty small compared to entire cost of a-
Yeah, so if we can make a, that, that could be a solution where the parent would pay the insurance if they choose to. And not even at a big cost, because that $200 unit's under $20 for the insurance for the year.
So who owns it, the school?
Oh, school technically will still own it. Yep, so what Jason and I talked about, the recommendation would be that every student would turn in the Chromebook at the, kind of like their textbook at the end of the year. They would turn in their Chromebook, you'd get looked at. And that would be another concern that Jason would talk about with staffing issues going forward. But they would turn it in, it would get re-looked at, just cleaned up a little bit, and then reissued to the student back in September when they come back to the building. The other option that they would have is at the end of the four years, they would have, they would have the opportunity to purchase it at the depreciation rate, whatever the depreciation rate would be.
So they wouldn't keep the same Chromebook through the four years? Because I think that's what they did at the pilot we went and looked at.
They would, they would have, they would still be issued the same exact Chromebook, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Their information would be on there.
Correct, and, and that's kind of the nice thing too about the Chromebooks is most of that stuff's all stored on the cloud, so they could get to it even if they didn't have the Chromebook necessarily. But for the piece of, am I going to take care of this and everything like that, have that ownership piece, when we've collected, we'd want to give them the same one back. So if it was taken care of very well, they get it back, it's, it's very nice. Or if they did take care of it and they get it back and they're like, oh, this, you know, I got this thing again, you know? They might think about taking care of it a little bit better.
And the other, the only other request, which is not really a financial request, would be that we would, the committee would come together from a school aspect, create a protocol, building protocol, and then I would ask the school board to support a, a school board policy for one-to-one technology in the high school. And then that last chart is just what the projection would be by 2025. So in an ideal world, we would potentially be full one-to-one student body, nine through 12 by 2020, 2021.
The grades are pretty impressive, the A-pluses and the As, the use of the one-to-one.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, yes and, yeah.
But the, this is based on the families purchasing the computers?
Correct.
These aren't, these aren't computers that were-
Yeah, so the data would, the data, you know, and I don't know if the data would be the same depending on the classes. You know, I thought, it was interesting when we went to Burlington High School, Elliot Bamford and myself talked to a couple of kids. And one of the questions that Elliot asked three students was, do you get distracted by your Chromebook? Do you, or your laptop or your iPad or? And one of the kids said, you know, at first, yeah, we did a little bit because it was the new toy. But he, he made a comment that the students who failed without the Chromebook are still going to be those students that fail with the Chromebook. And the kids who take their school seriously with the Chromebook are still the same ones that are going to take it seriously without the Chromebook. And I thought that was an interesting perspective of a student. Then the, then another young lady said, you figure it out real quick. When you get that first bad test grade, if you, you know, you fool around, you, you figure out, as a high school kid, you figure it out, so.
Yeah, if you look at the apps, they're about the same the whole way down on both sides.
Yeah. And I think if we, you know, the grades are, the grades do, are, are great. And I think as long as we also keep in mind that this program is not just improving grades, it's also digital citizenship and college career-ready and just getting them ready for the 21st, you know, we talk about 21st century learning and critical thinking skills and research and things like that, so.
So this, the second year going in, and of course, we thought we'd have more students. What do you suppose is, is holding back more students from doing it, Mike? Especially the second year ago, I would think that-
Yeah, it was, it was exactly the same.
But after the freshman class went through, you think there would be more hype about it and more kids coming in would be interested in it? But we just like held the same level.
I think it's the purchasing of your own. I think even though we, even though we opened it up a little bit more this year, last year, we had it all the same Chromebook. We had the Samsung model, I don't know, so we had a Samsung model. And this year, we allowed parents to either bring in their own, or the students to bring in their own, or they could purchase to that Jason, Jason recommended. And I just, I really think it's, is it a need or a want? And I think that's where, you know, I look back at my own education and when I was growing up, if I went home and said, you know, said to my dad, hey, I want to be part of this program, and he goes, do you need it? Do you need it? You know, so that would have been the first question, so. You know, that, I don't know that for sure, but I know that people have, have said, or people have said the leasing opportunity would be a lot easier as well. They just don't, they don't see it feasible right now to put up $200 for a laptop when it's not technically needed.
So is that something you'd consider, that, let's say the school would have purchased, or purchased them and then leased them to the students?
Yeah, we actually, Jason and I talked about that. Bedford actually does a leasing program.
Yeah, three-year, a three-year leasing program. And, but the one thing that we need to keep in mind when we do, when you do the leasing programs, we still need a budget for the entire cost of purchasing those nonetheless. So that's kind of getting, you know, acquiring the equity to be able to, to purchase those in the, at the beginning. And then they can pay for it in the three years, it goes into a fund to help.
Or not a lease, but say like a four-year plan of payment. So if it's a $200 Chromebook, they'd only have to put up, say, $50 each year. And at the end of the four years, it's theirs. Yeah, we'd have to make the initial cost of purchasing.
Right, right, like a, like a run-to-own type of idea.
Or is there a way to, I'm just wondering if there's a way to do it, if people, if the students can lease them. I'm just wondering if there's a way to have it sort of a self-funding sort of a thing.
That's what I'm saying, so that over four years, not a lease, it's more a purchase. If you supply the first year what it's worth, and they pay, so every year, after four years, you rotate them through.
Yeah, and I know, like Bedford, if, I don't know, she said about 40 kids, school-wide?
Yeah, I think there is 40, for, yeah, so that, they chose not to purchase. So Bedford has a purchase, purchase it or you can lease it. And then there's 40 students that, that they currently have, give or take, that don't, that didn't do that. So they have a loner in school, when they come in in the morning, they get their loner, and at the end of the day, they drop it off. And that, those are school-purchased.
Is the, is the Chromebook the only device that they have access to? Are there other technology devices in the building that they have access to?
We have, I mean, we have, we technically have three computer labs, two are used as classrooms most of the time. And then we have one right off the library here that at certain times of the year, it's do or die. Teachers are running down to sign up for it. Teachers are running down to sign up for it, you know, so they could get in there, so. We do have a couple Chromebook cards now.
Yeah, the library's gotta mix Windows, Windows, Chromebook card. So there are some other technologies that are available, just not as readily available as if they were assigned.
Right. I would, you know, catching up on.
Yeah, 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 definitely, definitely.
Was there ever discussion on bring your own device first, going one shot with one device?
Absolutely, so there's, there's a lot of, um, different options that you could have, but there, there, we found that the one device, especially with the Chromebook being, pretty much, it's lightweight, it's inexpensive, the interface is exactly the same. Instead of, say, I'm a teacher and I'm trying to have everybody sign in, and we're gonna be doing this project using this app. And the Windows version, the Windows, you know, web interface is different than the download app, and then you have the small phone that you're trying to use it on, and then the, this student's battery dies, this one's got a virus on it. So you're a teacher trying to juggle all of these different options. It's, it, it ends up being a little disruptive and intimidating too. So I need to not only be able to teach, but know how to troubleshoot all these different devices. So that's one of those things that, that is difficult to, to swallow when it comes to bring your own device.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get all that, that was explored, or.
Yeah, and we did talk about it, yeah, and, uh.
Okay, thank you.
After this year, the teachers that taught the, the pilot with the, um, all the same Chromebook, they found it very beneficial. I mean, they had, we had kids that were on vacation or homesick that were piping into conversations that they were having in class online. Some of the teachers are, a couple of the teachers are a little nervous about letting them bring their own Chromebooks in because they're not all gonna be, look alike. You know, but it was pretty impressive walking into a classroom and seeing, you know, their laptops up, they're engaged, they're, you know, they're talking. They're not even just, you know, I was in there a lot into social humanities class, I was in there a lot. And, you know, they'd be talking online, but they would also be talking to each other in person, you know, just kinda like we are right now, you know?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
All right, thanks, I'll see you next meeting.
One second. Rich, I just wanted.
Yeah, one second.
He has information about what just happened. And Mike, I know was out there, so I wanted them to be able to communicate. Apparently, it's, I know, you know, it's not life-threatening, just leave it at that.
Okay, good.
Can't think he knows where the controls is. It's just feast or famine, either it's too cold or.
At work, we had people complain too much about the different conference rooms had different heats. We actually wrote like an IOT bot that you could just email, like, heat@sc.com, and it would change the heat for you. Guess we don't have a budget for that.
I'll just bring a car.
I'll wait for my toes to stop.
It's pretty sweet though, if you're in the room, you're cold, you just instant message the bot and say, you know, small conference room, plus degrees, and all of a sudden it goes, whoo, and turns on.
That's cool.
Go to work in the private sector.
Yeah, exactly.
Sorry about that. I'm wearing like all over the place, I think we had correspondence, Derek.
Oh. I don't think we had any.
I'm not certain if we had any.
I don't believe.
Except for one of the four candidates.
Yeah, we mentioned that last night, so.
So with that, with the approval of draft minutes from seven thirteen?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? abstained?
Aye.
Paula?
Yeah, abstained, abstained. I think I said aye, sorry.
Three zero two.
So let me know.
We've already gone through the hiring summary. Are you welcome, Paula? Jason, when you go out, can you just ask Frank to come in for a moment?
Sure.
Please, thank you. Any school board comments?
I'd like to welcome Paula to the board. Sad to see Nikki go, but I think that, even though you ended up kinda being the last person standing, I don't feel like we had to settle. I feel like we, we, we ended up being very lucky and very fortunate to have you join the board.
I think so.
You're here, welcome.
Thank you.
And just for the record, I would like to thank Paula too, because last year, she was very helpful in terms of giving us some direction in terms of our thoughts about the gifted and talented, or enrichment programs at the elementary school. And then we went and visited her school last year, and it's a really neat school, had some really neat programs. So I'm, I'm quite excited about having her on the board, I think it's gonna be a great.
Thank you.
And if you look, the, the next item is professional development opportunities from NHSBA. There are two different courses that are available to school board members if they have an interest in attending.
I just thought I would.
Well, especially where one of them happens to be negotiating.
One of them happens to be negotiating. Another one has to be, has to do with budgeting and things like that, so if anybody wants to go, let me know, and I will register you.
I'll call.
And there is some money in the budget for that. It was professional development.
Yeah. The collective bargaining one, we have a school board meeting scheduled that same evening.
Yes, we do.
There was another, I think there was another conflict with another board meeting.
Were you interested in going to all those?
To, to best.
Yeah, that's, um, September seventh is a board meeting night.
And I think the eleventh, September ninth is a board meeting as well, which is special educational.
You could also inquire, I mean, if they're gonna be having it again.
Right.
This is the course of the year, which they may very well do.
They might even offer webinar audit after it's done.
Yeah.
Sometimes they recall them.
I think I hopped over Community Forum, but I haven't been able to hear from the community. I think there's no Community Forum. As far as committee reports, I don't know if anyone has met Perk or anyone?
LAN negotiation, Matt. Sounds good. We have an act on a committee.
Same, same thing with us. Who is our perk rep? Well, as of right now, it's Tina. I was going to inquire, I was going to inquire, where Paula just came on. I mean, that's really about the only thing that's kinda floating there, and I don't know if you have an interest in perk.
What does that entail?
Derek can probably tell you, because he'd been on it.
You meet once a month, it's usually right after school, from like four to five-thirty. And it's basically just approving curriculum and recommending to the board for approval. It's not a, obviously, you wanna review the materials ahead of time, I don't have any questions ready for the, but by then, it's already embedded by teachers and administration, it's really just asking questions.
So you're just meeting with the team?
Yes, the team, it's, it's run by Julie, Dr. Hian, Curriculum Director. There's usually each of the principals on it, and then if it's science curriculum, some science teachers from each school, they pull it together, they make a recommendation, you can ask questions, you can review it, and then bring it up for basically. But it's, it's like an hour and a half once a month.
Something might be interesting.
Feel free to ponder that for a while. I'll hang on to it for now.
It's usually, you can talk to Dr. Hian as well. Usually she schedules it so it's right before a board meeting. So it's if we meet the first and third, she tries to do it the third Wednesday, so you can get on it, just come here and then roll into the board meeting.
Okay.
She's usually pretty good about it.
Okay.
So you can think about it for a little bit.
Okay.
Just still here for a little while.
It's a, it's a once-a-month though thing, it wouldn't roll into more than once a month.
No, no, and sometimes you get canceled, so sometimes it's not even once a month.
Right, especially where they just, we just approved the curriculum frameworks for just about everything from K to twelve, so I don't know what the next steps are, but, yeah, okay.
Just the liaison, right? Just the liaison?
Mm-hmm.
It looks like I'm the only one standing for that again, so I guess I'll take that for the team, but, but that's fine. Will she be in contact with me?
I'll let her know, she, she. I, I can let her know. She'd inquired to me a week or so back, asking who would be assuming the role.
Okay.
So I told her to let her know.
Okay.
So the only other thing I have as far as committees, I'd heard from the, uh, the chair of the Budget Committee, Frank, inquiring as far as, right now, we're scheduled for six meetings. Right. With them. And I know the process we're gonna go through is, is quite a bit different, and we're gonna get to them a little bit earlier. Do we have, like, and then we talked about when we thought we could get to the Budget Committee?
Uh, I actually, I gave you a draft copy that I'm gonna continue to provide you till we get through this, but.
Yeah.
It looks like, based on the schedule, that we will be delivering, the board will have the ability to deliver it to the, to the budget period first week in November, which is almost a week and a, a good week and a half before we normally.
Right.
We get it to them, it's two weeks.
And the other she's asking, again, we're set up for six meetings right now?
Yeah.
And timeframe is a little bit tight this year as far as when we can have, um, finalize and have a hearing?
Sure.
Do you think we'll, we'll need a six? We didn't use six last year, did we? I thought we were scheduled for six and only used five.
We only used five.
I, I would think we'd be able to do five again, wouldn't we?
I think we would as well.
If not less even.
I, I think the, uh.
What'd you think?
I would think that.
I would think the way we're gonna deliver.
I'd go for four, but, but I really do believe, and I don't wanna overvalue, but I, I think the way that we're gonna be able to present the budget with those three-year actuals and year-to-date.
Yeah.
Will, will take away a lot of the flipping back and forth between reports and a lot of that dialogue, so we can get that information and, and to the Budget Committee and to the School Board, and then we can also, anytime we need to provide updates of that, those reports will be up to the minute, if you will, for year-to-date. So there won't be a lot of that dialogue and that switching between reports that we have in years past. So I, I think we could, I, I really do, I, I, you know.
I would think realistically, we could do five, if not less, I would think. And the other question she had is, do we have thought on the schedule? As far as who, in what order? Would it be similar to last year?
I would say I would just, unless the, the school board would like a change of that. It was pretty consistent the way we've done in the past two years, where we've, uh, working backwards. The last presenter would be special services and.
Salaries.
HR and salaries.
Yeah.
And then we just have basically the principals and the other department directors responsible. So I, I would follow the same schedule.
Okay.
As the chair, and if you still want to have, um, the superintendent present the budget and then have the individuals, the other second, go around, if you will.
I think we can, we can talk about that anyway.
Okay.
Even when we formulate the budget.
Sure.
As far as who's gonna be.
I'll provide you at the next meeting with the schedule.
I think the fact that we're gonna be presenting the, if, we have the possibility of presenting it to the Budget Committee that much earlier.
Right, that's almost two weeks early than we normally look at to that.
Which gives them plenty of time to digest it before we get in front of them, that.
Right.
There's no reason why it can't be streamlined much more so than it has been.
I agree.
One consideration with the new principal at the high school, we probably oughta have that presentation be the second time.
The second time, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, with that? I believe we've already gone through the policies, right? We're at Manifest? And I think we have the signatures on the Manifest, which will bring us to non-public. Section RSA ninety-one dash A colon three-one-one. The dismissal promotion or compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any changes, charges against him unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting and two requests that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted. Be the hiring of any person or public employee, see matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body of the agency itself, unless such person requests an open meeting.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we're now non-public.